Just give it a moment. We have. Attendees are getting on. You can start whenever you want, Mr. Mayor. There's currently 35 attendees and 11 panelists.
All right. For the Madam Clerk reads the sunshine notice, I just want to welcome everybody to our first Zoom meeting. Please bear with us in case we have any technical difficulties. This is the first time we're doing this, but in light of everything going on in the world, this is the way it looks like for the near future we'll be conducting our meetings. So, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. The time is now 7:01. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the November 28, 2019, issues of the Nellie Sun, the Herald News, and Star Ledger. In an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19 pandemic, the public meeting for the remainder of the year 2020 have been changed to Zoom webinar or teleconference meetings until further notice. Notice of meeting revisions will be published in the May 8, 2020, issues of the Star Ledger, May 9, 2020, issues of the Herald News, as well as tap into nelly.net and through the Township Alert system. The public will be able to listen to the Board of Commissioners meeting and participate during the designated public comment portion of the meeting by utilizing access through a URL link or dial-in numbers provided for by the township website. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Patraco?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Everybody, please stand for the flag salute. A pledge of allegiance. Have a moment of silence for our township residents who have passed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you. Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for April 7, 2020. I have a motion.
Move it.
Commissioner Rogers?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi. Any communication, Madam Clerk?
No communications, Mayor.
Commissioner Rogers, you have a proclamation tonight.
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, and it's very timely to view the fact that our health officials, our first responders, and our nurses have been really on the front lines. Now, this proclamation is from the entire Board of Commissioners because it has been truly a team effort to do what we've been able to do through this crisis. So, the Board of Commissioners hereby issued this proclamation on May 5, 2020. Whereas registered nurses in the United States comprise our nation's largest healthcare profession, and whereas the depth and breadth of the registered nursing profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings, and whereas professional nursing has been demonstrated to be an indispensable component in the safety and quality of care of hospitalized patients, and whereas nurses all around the world have been called into action amid the COVID-19 pandemic, sacrificing their very lives for the health and safety of the world's population, and whereas professional nursing has been demonstrated to be an indispensable component in the safety and quality of care of the public during this worldwide health crisis, and now therefore be proclaimed, the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, along with the American Nurses Association, recognize the week of May 6 to 12 as National Nurses Week and the month of May as National Nurses Month. You make a difference and not to nurses, sheer numbers, their unparalleled impact on health and healthcare, and an open invitation to thank a nurse for enriching our lives and the world we live in. And be it further proclaimed that the Township of Nutley extend our thanks, admiration, and respect to all of our township of Nutley Public Health Nurses, Patricia L. Cruz, RN, BSN, Kim Lewis, RN, BSN, and Madeline Goglia, RN, for their constant and unwavering service, dedication, compassion, and professionalism throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as throughout their careers. And before I close, the names that I just mentioned, 24/7 on the phone, taking calls, sometimes 2, 3 in the morning, assisting our residents through this difficult time. And so, that's the proclamation, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners, for your support.
They've been doing a bang-up job, Commissioner, in handling a very, very difficult situation and contacting people and their families during this pandemic. So, pass on our words of praise to them. Commissioners, anybody would like to say anything about this? Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I'd like to echo your comments, Mayor, and I'd like to thank not only the nurses that are in this proclamation, but Commissioner Rogers and the entire Department, all right, the Public Affairs Department, for doing such an outstanding job under tremendous pressure. They are absolutely on the front lines, and they are absolutely our Nutley heroes, and I have to thank them from the bottom of my heart.
Commissioner Patraco?
Again, you know, well said. I think we have, you know, fantastic people that really care about the town and the residents and, you know, nurses worldwide. I mean, what they're doing for, you know, our township, our country is second to none. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I'll echo all of the comments, and I won't repeat them, but I will add, and Steve, to please extend this on behalf of all of the Commissioners to your nursing staff and everybody in Public Affairs. I've had the occasion to have to speak with Patty Cruz and the other nurses, and when you're in the middle of a pandemic crisis, it's great to know that we have such exceptional talent within our nursing staff to care for people.
Thank you, Commissioners. Let's move on to reports. Commissioner Patraco?
Yes, I have my monthly report for public safety. Thank you.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a shade tree report for the month of April, Mayor.
Bills, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for May 5, 2020, department totals, Public Affairs, $81,140.87. Revenue and Finance, $7,229,953.24. Public Safety, $9,052.85. Public Works, $416,249.84. Parks and Public Property, $627,909.58. Water Utility, $151,102.50. Payroll overtime for April 17, 2020, $1,764.72. That is for COVID. Total payroll, $804,524.46, for a grand total of $9,319,933.34. Second? Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Before we get to public comment, in order to be recognized, you'll have to hit the icon that raises your hand. Mr. Jenna Tempo will then recognize you, and then please state your name and your address and any comments that you have. This will be on agenda items only. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners, please state your name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on the agenda items only? Anybody have their hands raised?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. Hold on one second. First person is Mr. Larry Quirk. I'm going to put him on now. Mr. Quirk?
You have to unmute him, or does he have to unmute himself?
He's on, I have unmuted him. Oh, let me do it again. Hold on. Mr. Quirk, are you on mute? Can you check your own side? There you go. Okay, you have the floor, Mr. Quirk. Three minutes. There you go. Mr. Quirk? Mr. Quirk, can you hear us? Mr. Mayor, appears to be some technical issue on, I believe it's on his end. It's where he's not muted, and it's showing that he's talking at the top, and now it seems to be off. Hold on. Mr. Quirk, I see that you're trying to speak. Are you there? Are you seeing itself? What's that? Should I try to let him in his video? Click on this?
You may, let's go to the next person.
Okay. Mr. Quirk, come back to you. Let's try the next person. Mr. Quirk, can you hear? Next person is titled February or Feb-T. Okay.
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Can you hear me, Mr. Jen Tempo?
We can hear you, Mr. Moore. Loud and clear.
Mr. Scarpelli, I just have one question on the bill list. On the first page down towards the bottom, the Amazon, is that Amazon Common Communication Services? There's a number of those appearing on the list. My question is, how do I know what was purchased? It just gives you a title.
We have the same thing, Mr. Uh, we have that with anything, if it's whether it's Staples or anything, if all you have is the who it's paid to, you don't have exactly what was paid to.
No, I could understand if it was Staples, it gives you a better idea. I believe, I believe the last week when I asked about this last meeting, said that you were going to start the purchase this way because you just had authorization to do that. And I'm just curious, when you put the Amazon Services Incorporated, could it be dash what it's for, just as a large item?
Forward, I don't know if we can do that, Mr. Moore, but we'll take a look at that. We'll talk with and see what we could do.
Yeah, so you have, you have quite a few of them on there, and it's all over, and I was just curious if we could start to list at least what, if you, if you go to Staples, we know what you purchased. If you went to a paint store, we know what you purchased.
You don't really know what we purchased, Mr. Moore. You may know that we purchased some sort of.
Something from Staples.
Right.
Thank you.
Questions on the agenda items? Agenda items?
We have another person, Mr. Mayor. Sir, you have the floor.
Yes, hi. Probably technical email that distributed the notice of this meeting. The agenda and minutes. It should be nutleynj.org. Anybody else would probably not be able to get the documents so easily.
It's picking up a little bit, Mr. Rubin. I gather that the website somewhere was not specified correctly. Is that what I'm getting?
It says Nutley NJ.
Look by who?
Mr. Jen Tempo?
Have the Commissioners mute? So Commissioners, if you could mute, unless you're going to speak, we think that's what's causing some of the feedback. So, if you could all mute, I'm going to try Mr. Quirk again. Mr. Quirk, are you listening? Mr. Quirk, are you listening? Sorry, Commissioners, this is obviously. I don't see anyone else's hand up at this time. No one else has their hand raised, Mr. Mayor.
Did we get Mr. Rubin's question correct? Was it about the website and the?
Yes, sir. Email that distributed the link for the minutes and agenda is incorrect.
All right, Mr. Rubin, so we apologize for that, and we'll make sure it's correctly going forward. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on the agenda items only?
I don't see any of their hands up, Mr. Mayor.
Let's go to Commissioner announcements. We'll start with Tucci. Unmute yourself if you're going to talk, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First and first and foremost, I'd like to thank Commissioner Rogers for his service. This is, in fact, his last meeting, inasmuch as he's decided not to seek reelection. I know Steve has a certain flair about him, but I have never encountered a person who's more dedicated or committed to doing the best job he can for this township, and he's a great Nutley citizen and in retirement from the Board of Commissioners. I wish him nothing but the best. Mayor, to you, I want to thank you for your service over the last four years. People may or may not know, it's not easy sitting in that chair and keeping the five Commissioners pretty much on track and everyone focused on what the important business is. And to Commissioner Patraco, Commissioner Evans, I'd like to thank you for all your cooperation throughout this last term, the four years. I've served with five different Boards of Commissioners, and I have to tell you, this was absolutely one of the best, and I wish everyone well. And for all the candidates out there who are seeking public office, I'm sure you're doing it all for the right reasons, and I wish you all the best on May 12. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo Commissioner Tucci's comments. Often, I talk to my, my team about core values, integrity, teamwork, mutual respect, and personal accountability. I find those to be most valuable when you're working, especially in an environment. Basically, let's tell the truth, work with one another, respect one another, and do what you say you're going to do. Steve, throughout your entire tenure on the Board, you've not only been committed to doing what you said you were going to do, but you also have been an advocate for breaking new ground and raising awareness of not only just what's happening at the local level, but also what's happening at a national level. You're very caring. Your work with the veterans, I'm sure, will be a hallmark for the town for years to come, given the establishment of the Veterans Bureau in the Public Affairs Department. I do, it's the same as Commissioner Tucci, acknowledge the work, hard work of the Mayor and the Mayor's Office and all the challenges that you face. So, Joe, you know, thank you for your leadership over the last four years. And to my fellow brethren, you know, we couldn't get through the last four years, the difficult challenges that we have faced, and there are many. And in some cases, we made it, maybe made it look very easy to the public, but to get to where we are today and what we're about to do tonight, we couldn't get there without the commitment of this Board and its unified presence around not worrying about politics, but focusing first and foremost most on what is best for the town. So, Steve, do your best wishes in your next endeavor. I'm sure it's not retirement. I'm sure you're going to do, you're going to show up and do something someplace else. And remember, you know, you know, at the next meeting, you might want to be out tonight singing, "Oh, Happy Days." Enjoy, and thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Commissioner Patraco?
Some mute. Commissioner, you're on mute. Commissioner Patraco?
I'll mute your phone.
There it is.
I'm good. Thank you, Alex. Can you hear me? I actually, I actually started off by saying, I actually posted something on Facebook regarding Steve. I had the privilege of sitting next to him for the last four years. Like all of you supported me, one of the worst things of this term was losing my mom, and I know, Joe, you lost your dad in this term, and I have to tell you, you know, Amor, all of you guys, I know that sometimes I wear my emotions on my sleeve, but you guys are like family to me. I wish you all luck in the next election. Steve, I can't say enough of what I've learned from you, you know, and the most important thing was that you taught me a lot about life, a lot about being a better person, and a lot about God, and I commend you for that. I look forward to seeing you again in the future, and you are a special person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I recognize Commissioner Rogers, I just want to say, Steve, it's been a pleasure serving with you the last eight years, the leadership and innovation you've brought to the Public Affairs Department, especially with the veterans programs. You know, one of the only municipalities in the whole country to have a Veterans Affairs Bureau, so much recognizing them, making sure they got their medals. It's been a pleasure to be with you and serve with you. Your integrity is unmatched, and we wish you good luck in the future. And it's been my pleasure serving with all of you the last four years, and look forward to continuing that. Fisher Rogers?
Well, Mayor, can I make my comments at the end of the meeting?
Yes, Fisher.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on to just one issue, we double-checked the website connection, the link, and it is, it is working. So, I don't, I'm not sure what happened with Mr. Rubin. Maybe he had an older link, but the current links that are up on the website do take you to the, to the meeting documents, just so, so the record is clear.
Thank you. Let's move on to ordinance introductions. Commissioner Patraco?
Yes, I have ordinance number 3441. In order to amend an ordinance codified in the code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter 673, entitled vehicles, impoundment, and towing, particularly Section 5, entitled towing, subsection K, entitled towing and storage fee. This is just a removal of the $25 administrative fee. And I thought I had my paper. Oh, here we go. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law and further consideration of said warrants for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be called that its second reading on, I think it's June 4?
June 4.
June 4. I move the ordinance.
Second?
Commissioner Rogers?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 3442 on the agenda has been pulled. Any comment on that, Commissioner Rogers?
No, Mayor, just pulled it tonight, and we'll revisit that some other time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans, ordinance number 3443?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This ordinance is the one that establishes each year our cap bank, which is enabled to, as I said, 48.14. This, as I explain every year, enables us to capture, and I call it cap bank, which is a paper entry, money that we didn't have to spend when we were below the cap. In the event that something extraordinary happens at a future date, within, actually within two years, the cap bank would be able to be applied to address the need for that additional spending if it should occur. We've never had a need to do that. This Board has always been adamant about the fact that we will not do that. We do it as a security measure, simply because you can, you need to be prepared for what could be the unknown or to what we're facing with global pandemic. So, this is, so just, it is a memo entry. It's not in the book. It's a memo that just keeps a record for the next two years of what might be available. I move that this ordinance be moved to second reading on June 4. While I don't have the exact language in me in my packet, but basically moving forward to June 4.
Second?
Commissioner Rogers?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Thank you, Commissioner. And why don't you just move into the budget presentation and introduction?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. So, we're going to try something new. Can everyone see the slide presentation on your screens?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. I have a few slides to, to go through, summary, budget introduction. And just a reminder, please, to avoid the background noise. Thank you. What's really important about this budget is summarized within these five slides. It's in recognizing the pandemic virus that we have been experiencing, COVID-19. It was incumbent upon the Board to, to figure out how we can absorb our recurring cost adjustments, look at the areas of lost revenue, and figure out how we can make that work in an environment where we would not be thinking the, the amount of money that we need to collect from taxpayers, given the environment. So, with this, I'll walk through these slides for the next two, three minutes, and then we'll hit the summary points. After I'm finished, Ray Serenelli is with us. He's our outside auditor. I asked him to make some, some comments, and then. And then commissioners, before we vote on the introduction, you're all welcome to comment accordingly. If we, now, there we go. In looking at this, there we go. In looking at this next slide, it's actually a summary. If you take the 70 or so-page state budget document, in a very summarized level, you can reduce it to this one page. As a municipality, for the municipal budget only, the five municipal departments that we need, gross basis, $56 million to cover our costs. We add to that the allocation of state aid that we get for what is called transitional state aid, for the portion of the aid that we need to give to the county and to the school. The aid is critical for our town and has been enormously helpful over the years. When you think about where we are right now, we're accumulating about $28 million worth of aid since 2014, and about 14 million of that has actually been a specific contribution to our school budget. So total operating budget is $58,027,406. Against that, we do have revenues from various sources, so parking meters, the courts, the code department, any business-type fees for fryers and health inspections, as well as money we get from the cable service and the pilots. The pilot agreements that have been negotiated are all included in there, as well as the gross amount of our state aid. So we have $16 million roughly in revenues, bringing down the annual amount paid to taxpayers to $41,872,752. And that amount has not changed from 2019. Of the roughly 1.1 million in operating cost increases, we've been able to offset that by revenues, primarily through the planning that we do to make sure that we're prepared for a crisis when it happens. And we've been able to do that this year. I move on to Slide 3, which, after you look at the summary, I think it's also important to summarize where we have operating cost changes for 2020. Overall, you'll see that we have $578,000 increase in salary costs and our other expenses across a range of areas. It totals $556,000 for a total cost increase of $1,152,166. I will note that in our budget, you'll see, on the other expenses, you'll see the reserve applied for $110,000 for a property revaluation. That money is being funded by the Mecca settlement arrangement and will be funded over the next five years through those revenues that we get from that agreement. I also point out that our debt services, costs are decreasing by $50,000, along with our medical insurance and our garbage removal costs. The other items in here are standard with our budget and are consistent, basically, year over year. When you then move to Slide 4, in summary, once you look at where we've had to increase spending, we then look at where do we get our revenues from. In part, the first part is that we do get it from transitional state aid. This year, last year, we got $3,250,000. We have already been approved by the state for $2,762,500, and $487,500 is still pending final approval. So I have not included that in this budget at this point in time. We tend to remain conservative when we think about revenues. Because of the environment, the pilot agreements that you see here are the municipal payments against the pilots for the medical school and for the first building to be occupied, Ralph Lauren, on the main campus of the Roche site. What's important about these pilot payments, this is the municipal portion. There is a larger amount, and a piece that goes to the county, as well as a piece that goes to the schools for this, which is allocated separately and not through our budget. The key point here is that when we negotiated those pilot agreements, we negotiated them at 100% coverage for our local tax. That's the school and the municipal portions of our annual taxes. The payments increase year over year for the next 30 years. The next piece that I'll point out is the bold area is lost revenues. We did, we normally, if everything's world equal, this year, last year, and prior years, our revenues would be $400,000 higher than what they are in this budget. We recognize that because the courts have been closed, meter parking is down, and the permit activity, large permit activity and the code enforcement office has all been reduced. So we're recognizing that reduction in annual revenues. To offset that, to make sure that we met our goal, which was a zero increase, we released from our reserves $1,194,194 to zero out the budget increase. So overall, our net revenue increase is $1,152,166. So with these three slides, you can go into the state budget document and look at all of the various points of detail. But in order to look at that document, I believe that from a transparency standpoint, and the board, again, all aligned on this, we needed to summarize the budget and make sure that we're providing simpler information that hopefully is more understandable as to what's happening in the budget for this year. We did the same thing last year, and we will continue to practice this going forward. And whoever is there after the election, I'm sure will continue this. The next slide, 5. It's important that we all understand that the municipality has historically been financially very strong. We have a AA2 Moody's Investors rating, a bond rating. This enables us to borrow money at a much lower interest rate. The rollover of a note that we just did this spring was at 1.43% interest, very low. Our ability to borrow, our ceiling says that we can borrow up to $134,700,000. Today, our debt is outstanding at $13,700,000, so roughly about 10% of our borrowing power. To point out how we've been looking at this over time, we currently have $1.7 million less debt outstanding since 2015. And given the fact that debt is lower and the interest rates are lower, it has actually helped in our budget to lower our debt service costs by $50,000 this year. What's just a simple point, when we take out our debt, we don't take it out for 30 years. We try and keep around 10 years. And when you average the 13 million, it's basically over 10 years at 2.5% interest. So from a standpoint of the municipality, in the event something caused us to have to borrow, we have the capacity to do that. This board has been adamant about keeping the debt low. They've supported me on that position from the revenue and finance standpoint, and we've continued to maintain that over the last many, many years, and will continue to do so. In going to the last slide, there's some key summary points. One of the things that this budget does not, is not impacted by, is the outlaying costs that we're incurring to cover the pandemic virus. So overtime costs, costs for PPE, for masks, for sanitizing the buildings, and so on. We are not taking that money out of our operating cost. We do have a reserve account on the balance sheet that we are utilizing for that. But as of right now, these costs are reimbursable at the 75% level by FEMA. And I just confirmed on the phone today with the county that they do have CARE Act money and that they will be able to cover the remaining 25% that FEMA will cover. So as far as what we're spending for the pandemic crisis, that will not impact our taxpayers. Locally, it'll come through federal monies. We do recognize that we have lost $400,000 in revenue, but as of today, neither FEMA or the CARE Act will cover a municipality for their lost revenues. Fortunately, we've been able to, because of our planning and our position, been able to cover that ourselves. There's a couple of things that are really important to keep in mind about this budget. Right now, we are collecting second quarter property taxes. As of today, 66% of the second quarter property tax has already been collected. In fact, we had almost 60% of that in the bank by May 1st. So people have been able to pay, the banks have been able to pay. And so right now, we will be looking at what we need to do to look at what the collection experience will be on the remaining 34%, which we'll look at over the coming month. But if we were to experience a major shortfall in our property tax collections, and there's a greater risk associated with that in the third and fourth quarter than it is for the second quarter, and we have other revenue issues, while the state has absolutely committed to our TSA, given where they're at, if their budget shortfall isn't cured with assistance from the federal government, they may impact their actual ability to make the payment, even though we have the actual commitment. Any of those events, anything like that to come along, or an extraordinary expenditure, will result in a change to this budget. So if relief for the state and local government, which is currently pending, doesn't come through, that could impact us going forward. Further property tax relief is pending with the state. It will require law changes, either through executive order or the legislature. If that's not resolved, and we are in an environment where every taxpayer is treated universally the same, and there's no ability to identify particular taxpayers in need, that could have an impact on this budget. And embedded in this budget already is the recognition that we do have a new hire freeze in place and that we are quarantining nonessential spending until we're clear as to what the revenue collections will look like as we go forward. The public hearing on the budget, I'm sorry, on my copy, I have it wrong, it's June 4th, not June 2nd. And this budget documents, as well as these slides, will be posted on the website in the morning. So in total, that's a summary of the budget. It took an extraordinary amount of work on the part of the commissioners and the assistance of Ms. Avachi and company, our outside auditors with our CFO, to engineer the budget to this point. While we're not clear as to what the future holds, we are unified in our determination to minimize any negative shortfall, any negative impacts on the taxpayers of Nutley. So I want to thank all of the commissioners for your thoughtfulness and your consideration as we went through this very difficult process to get to this point. This is only the introduction, so with the hearing, a public hearing coming up on June 4th, if there's any events that occur between now and then, they will be reflected in the budget, either positively or negatively, depending upon how events unfold. So with that, I will ask Ray Serenelli to comment. And then commissioners, if you would like to, you're welcome to comment as well. Thank you, Mayor. Ray?
Okay, thank you. I'm unmuted, I assume, at this point? Okay. Well, okay, so I'd like to thank you for letting me make a presentation. I guess I've seen Nutley through about 35 or 40 budgets, and certainly no circumstance are as unusual as what you're facing with this year's budget. I would like to take a minute, though, and offer my best wishes to anyone who is fighting or has beaten COVID. I'd like to offer my condolences to anyone who has lost someone. And I'd like to offer a thank you to medical staff, first responders, necessary workers for keeping us going. They are the new rock stars. So first, you've delivered a budget with no tax levy increase. I believe that's a first in a long time, or as long as I can remember. And the reason you can do that is because after the last recession, for the last eight or 10 years or so, you've been planning for this recession. I don't think anyone expected it to happen overnight, but like all cycles, there was another recession coming. We just didn't think it was going to happen instantaneously. But you are prepared, as prepared as anyone has been. And that really has been done through good planning, looking at each year's budget, making difficult decisions, doing an in-depth review and analysis of the budget each year, so that you have good policies in place. You know, watching the commissioners each year, I've come to recognize that you have all put policy before politics, and that's not always an easy thing to do. And that's why you're in good position with this budget, because past policy by the Board of Commissioners has put you in a good enough position. By making those tough decisions in other years, it makes this budget a little bit more acceptable in a very difficult year. Secondly, this year's budget is a strategic action, and it's a result of the hard work that I had mentioned. You've already obtained confirmation of the transitional aid. You've finalized the pilot plan, and that created the new revenue. It also eliminated the assessed value, but created the pilot revenue to offset that. And you've also completed the hard work of negotiation, negotiating with the Hoffman LaRoche developer to finalize that pilot program, which does allow you to now release three years' worth of tax appeals reserves that had to be established because of pending negotiations. It appeared as if they were going to appeal their taxes. But as a result of finalizing your pilot program, you now have a reserve that you can release to help balance this year's budget. You've already taken a realistic look at the revenues and adjusted those downward that need to be adjusted down. I think that will help to prevent a down cycle in next year's budget. In fact, thirdly, I'd like to say that because the actions that you've taken in previous years and the planning that you're doing in the current year budget, I don't see any long-term issues related to issuing a zero-tax increase budget. In other words, you looked at a realistic picture and were able to craft a budget that not only serves this year's need of helping taxpayers by not giving them an increase, you're also, you're putting yourself in good position going forward. position going forward next year and beyond. So lastly, you know, we've never seen a climate like this. This is, you know, something that is hard to prepare for, and, and difficult to be ready to do. But the, the Board of Commissioners have evaluated the risks, and carefully about, evaluated things like tax collections, state aid, some of the revenues that have already been adjusted, and, and taken those all into account when you prepare this budget. So when you have your hearing next month, you may need to make some further evaluations and reevaluate your budget position. You know, some things may evolve, other state aids, et cetera. You'll see where tax collections are. But I think you have a solid base for an excellent budget going forward, given these unusual circumstances. Commissioner Evans mentioned that you were looking at things like a, an expense and a hiring freeze. Those are the kind of things that work in uncertain times. So I think that was a good idea, and I suggest that you follow through with that until you have a clearer picture of the road ahead. So I'm sure there'll be much more discussion on the budget at the hearing, and there may be further adjustments both then and in the future. But we'll continue to monitor all of those items, revenues, expenses, until the budget is finally adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Tucci, any comments?
I, I'd just like to, once again this year, commend Commissioner Evans on taking all of the budgetary information from all the departments, and compiling it in a format that's easily understood. I think his presentations over the years have been excellent. It's, it's hard work. I mean, it's hard work in each department, and I, I can only speak for my department. I'm sure every other commissioner will speak for their own. But our, our numbers pretty much speak for themselves. We, we have a zero increase this year, all right, because we continue to review our policies and our procedures, and what we do is very introspective, all right, and we only spend what we absolutely need to spend, and not $1 more, always keeping our taxpayers in mind. Okay? So for that, I'd like to thank Commissioner Evans. I'd like to thank all of the other commissioners for the cooperation that everyone put forth, so we could get to this point. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petrakko?
As well, I think it's been a great teamwork. Obviously, public safety budget has risen, and it's thanks to all of you that keep funding public safety. And I'd like to just say, it has paid dividends, as we all know. You know, we are one of the 50th safest communities in New Jersey, which is not an easy feat in this area, to say the least. And I would just like to really thank all of you. I, I think that the board has worked excellent together. It's been a team effort for me, and I thank each and every one of you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rogers?
Well, it certainly took a team effort to get where we are today, being able to share with our residents that there would be no tax increase. But I've got to tell you, with Commissioner Evans at the helm, with his expertise, it was just an extraordinary, extraordinary thing that had to be done in order to make sure that we would spend, as Commissioner Tucci said, only that which was necessary. And again, what a team effort on the part of all the commissioners. I know in my department, I have the smallest budget, and the, the smallest amount of employees, but even there, we found cuts through consolidating jobs, shared services. But certainly, thank you all for the work that was done. And again, Commissioner Evans, my hat's off to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would like to also commend Commissioner Evans on his leadership on the budget, getting us to all where we had to be. I would like to thank all commissioners for their help in getting us there. The road ahead is going to be challenging, and I think we're going to have a lot more work to be done between now and June, as we move forward. So, Commissioner, do you have to?
Yes, I have to read the budget notice. Okay, and then, after I read, it's a short excerpt, after that, we'll need to vote, okay?
Very good.
Municipal budget of the township of Nutley, County of Essex for the fiscal year 2020. Be resolved that the following statements of revenue and appropriations shall constitute the municipal budget for the year 2020. Be it further resolved that said budget be published in the Nutley Sun in the issue of May 14, 2020. The governing body of the township of Nutley does hereby approve the following, the, the following budget for the year 2020. So move.
You done mute?
Does someone second?
Yes, Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, I second.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
I think he's on mute.
The host has unmuted me. Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's move on to Commissioner Rogers' resolution.
Resolution number 8720. This resolution declares May 2020 as Mental Health Month, and it's important that we raise awareness, especially at this time, that many people in our township, as well as around the country, have gotten depressed, and they've gotten truly affected emotionally over this crisis. But in our township, we have a lot of resources, and I urge anyone listening or watching, just pick up the phone. Don't be ashamed to make a phone call, and ask for some help, or for somebody to talk with you. So I present this resolution on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, declaring May 2020 as Mental Health Month. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 8820, declaring National Military Appreciation Month for the Township of Nutley. Now, before I move on this, I'm going to share with the residents tonight, something that they're probably unaware of, that this Board of Commissioners is certainly responsible for. During this crisis, there were military veterans who live in our community, who passed away, either some as a result of the virus, but probably most as a result of other illnesses. And I shared this with the people of Nutley, because as they passed away, they were denied the, because of state regulations and national rules, they were denied the proper honorable military honors that they would normally be entitled to, a call from a military officer, an American flag, taps, et cetera. Well, this Board of Commissioners, and believe me, it was this board, decided that we will not let that go by without being answered. So we made sure that an officer from the military branch of the service that the deceased veteran was at, would make a phone call to the family, and let them know that we had not forgotten who they were, and what they did for this country. And believe me, I'd made some of those calls, and it just brought a lot, a lot of comfort to those family members. In addition to that, we do have a list of some veterans, who, we're going to make sure they do get flags, and they do get military honors when all this clears up. But I mentioned that to the residents of Nutley for two reasons. One, if you have a military relative, a friend, or a neighbor who did pass during this crisis, please let one of us know, one of the commissioners know. And I'm sure they'll be in touch with my department, and we'll make sure that the honors are given to those military personnel. But secondly, let the residents of Nutley know that, you know, this is a, a National Military Appreciation Month resolution, but extraordinary community. Every day is Military Appreciation Day in this township. So it's important that the residents know that even through this crisis, in a very quiet way, we did some extraordinary things for the people who serve this country. And on that, I move this resolution, National Military Appreciation Month here for the Township of Nutley. So move.
A second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Tucci, you don't have anything on the agenda. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 8520 authorizes the refund of overpayment of tax charges in the amount of $3,917 for the blocks listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution number 8620. This resolution is read on behalf of the Inteal Board, and it relates to the, the Governor's Executive Order. I'm sorry, there's a typo in the resolution. It's number 103, it's number 130. So we just need to, in the certified copy. Whereas, on March 9, 2020, the Governor of the State, Executive Order 130, declared a public health emergency, a state of emergency. And whereas COVID-19 pandemic crisis has impacted lives and livelihood of many residents across our township through illness, job loss, delayed state and federal benefits, and with much sadness, the loss of life. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners unanimously signed the Governor's Executive Order number 130, which authorizes the township to extend the grace period for the second quarter property tax payments to no later than June 1, 2020, as it will provide much-needed relief for the residents of our township. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners acknowledges that it will comply with the specific conditions outlined in Executive Order 130. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners does recognize that other action on the part of the Governor and the legislature will be needed if the negative effects of this pandemic crisis can come. The other, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, in the County of Essex, New Jersey, authorize that one. In accordance with Executive Order 130, the grace period for the second quarter property tax payments is hereby extended from May 1 to June 1, 2020. The Board of Commissioners will comply with all of the terms and conditions as stated in this Executive Order. And three, the municipal clerk shall provide a sealed copy of this resolution to the Division of Local Government and City of Community Affairs, the days of its adoption. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Petrakko, also, so you have nothing on the agenda, so we'll move to my resolution. Whereas, the Township of Nutley advertised for proposals for the marketing of recycling materials on March 17, 2015. Whereas, the requests for proposals for the marketing of recycling materials were accepted by the Township Clerk on May 8, 2015. Whereas, the Township of Nutley reviewed and analyzed all submitted proposals. Whereas, the proposal of Integrity Recycling and Waste Solutions 11131, Suite 223, Flemington, New Jersey, was the favorable proposal for the township of Nutley. Whereas, Integrity Recycling and Waste Solutions was recommended for a three-year contract award, with two one-year options for contract extension effective on July 1, 2015. Whereas, the Township has selected exercise option to extend the contract for one-year contract extension, and the terms of the contract were for one year, effective on July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020. Whereas, change order number one to the contract has been authorized for an increase in the amount of the contract of $60,000. And whereas, funds are available from account number 001423209, and the amount not to exceed $60,000 have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Whereas, the original contract is being increased in the amount of $60,000, for a total adjusted contract amount of $100,000. Now, they were resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey. The change order number one is a change in the contract previously made by the Township of Nutley with the Waste Solution, and is hereby authorized and approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk reads the, the notice. If you'd like to be record, raise your hand, and we'll move on from there. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons address-
Excuse me, we, we need to go back to the mute.
I'm going to mute you all from here.
Thank you. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should state their name and address for the record, unless further time is granted by the Board. Each person should limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate members of the Board.
Does anybody wish to, anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
One second, Mr. Mayor, please.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Moore?
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, I have three questions, but I would like to say to Commissioner Rogers, happy trails. Good luck to you, sir. They, Mr. Scarpelli, will the future meetings, as long as we're using Zoom, will they include the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, and other meetings, public meetings in general?
Mr. Moore, both the, the Planning Board and Zoning Board have used Zoom their, their past meetings. We will continue to use it in this forum. It is, you know, it'll probably be up to a new commission, but I would assume that they would continue to use this forum.
It is, I know they were testing with it. I believe it was a Planning Board and a Zoning Board. But I just wanted to know, would that be a regular meeting through Zoom? Is that, is that planned for that, for the time being, as long as COVID is around?
That's what I understand, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Tucci, are, are you floating bonds, or looking to float bonds for a park? Somebody asked me that question today.
Am I looking to float bonds for a park?
For parks, and parks, some park, uh, work that we're going to have to have some, float some bonds, so we can cover the expenses of it. I was just curious. I hadn't heard anything about it. I said I would ask.
Nothing other than our, our, our typical capital program, all right, which I, which we submitted, and is part of this budget. But as things evolve, as far as the finances are concerned, I'm sure we'll be refining that. But nothing out of the ordinary. What, maybe what some people are, are thinking of are the improvements on Margaret Avenue, okay, on the track up there, and on the, on, on the field. And that's a facility that's shared with the, with the Board of Education and our high school students. But other than that, there's nothing really out of the ordinary, sir.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Mr. Rogers, we have any status on the Chickalini Building as of now, being that this is the last meeting?
Well, we'll leave that for a town attorney to speak to that issue. I believe there may be some legal issues, and I don't want to get involved in upsetting anything at this point.
Oh, no, I thought, I'm sorry, Mr. Evans, I, I apologize. Is there any update to the Chickalini Building at all?
I, there, there is, but I will refer to the town attorney.
Okay. I would say, Mr. Genet, is, is there anything that we can discuss openly, or is it, is it?
Mayor, you want me to answer that?
Sure, Mr. Genet.
Sure. Mr. Moore, we're waiting for the final report from the engineering company that we hired to do a study of that, not only the Chickalini area, but the surrounding building, I'm sorry, the surrounding property. And we're waiting for that. I, I believe that the next, once the new commission is seated, will be the first, probably one of the first orders of business.
Is that, is that available, or are we still waiting for that? I'm just curious. I can understand waiting.
It's not available, per se. It's going to be developed, and the town ultimately will go out for RFPs, or RFQs, for developers to develop the entire site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, let me get the next person on. Hello, can you hear?
Yes, this, Ed DeGeorges, 130 Mount Vernon Street. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Okay. Can the- Can the Commissioners identify any unallocated or undeveloped or vacant properties? And I'm thinking of maybe the Hoffman La Roche properties or vacant spaces to bring any potential PPE manufacturing capability into Nutley.
We don't have a lot of vacant land, and we do not control the Hoffman La Roche property that is owned by Prism Capital Investments. So there's not a lot of vacant land out there.
Even across the street?
Well, it's all owned by Prism.
All right, I just, just an idea to bring some taxable, you know, ratables for PPE, you know, equipment, light, light industrial manufacturing into Nutley. Or even part of the, you know, part of, you know, part of the process.
Certainly, something we can bring to Prism's attention to see if there's any interest in bringing some light industry onto the Prism site.
All right.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Yes, there's another person, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Yeah, Alex Rubin, three five four Hillside Ave. Just wanted to clarify that point about the web link for this meeting was in the email that was distributed this morning, not from the town's website. And I was able to get in and get the minutes and the agenda. That initial link was incorrect. Secondly, I wanted to point out, my daughters told me the other day they were at the intersection of Franklin and Center, and the planters at that intersection were inundated with like bees. And I wonder what, you know, eradication would go on, you know, to get those bees out of there.
It's the, it's the first time hearing of it, we'll send somebody down there to take a look at it. Commissioner Tucci, can you help us out with that if there's some bees in there?
There were honeybees in those planters, and our staff did in fact take care of that.
Thank you.
And lastly, I'd like to wish Commissioner Rogers, you know, good luck on his future adventures.
Thank you, Mr. Rubens. Anything further, Commissioner Tucci?
Mayor, I just wanted to add that we enlisted the services of a beekeeper. We don't have that expertise on hand, but we do have a relationship with the beekeeper that comes out from time to time and helps us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Moore. Mr. Del Pito.
Hi, good evening. My name is David Del Pito, eighty-seven Evergreen Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey. I was just wondering if you could tell me, Mr. Evans, Commissioner Evans, what happened to the million-dollar fine that Mecca was supposed to be paying towards us? Does that go towards the taxes?
Mr. Del Pito, I'd be happy to answer. I think you were on a previous town hall that I was on where we discussed it, but I'm not sure. But yes, the money that comes in as part of the settlement arrangement doesn't come in all at once. It comes in over a period of years. And yet, the money is being set aside in a trust to cover the cost of the revaluation. We have time to build it because we were able to defer the revaluation to the year 2022. In the meantime, we'll continue to build the reserve. When we have the revaluation happen back in two thousand and five timeframe, it cost almost nine hundred thousand dollars. And that cost the taxpayers that money. So the money that's coming in from the Mecca settlement is going to offset that cost, which in effect directs tax relief.
Okay, thank you. One other, can I ask one more other question?
Sure.
Okay. Mayor Scarpelli, since this builder was fined, and I was under the observation that he wasn't going to be allowed to build in our town again. I was just wondering, that monstrosity that's on Bloomfield Avenue and Center Street that really doesn't belong there, I was wondering, is he going to build any more disgusting buildings in our town that don't belong here?
Mr. Del Pito, I don't think we have the ability to prevent somebody from building in the town. Mr. Jena Tempo, you want to add to that?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. We, Mr. Del Pito, we do not have the ability to prevent a builder who applies, goes through the process, goes through the Planning Board, or the Zoning Board, and gets approval. So that was not a possibility. It is not something that was achievable in the resolution with the builder.
Thank you, Mr. Jena Tempo.
He has since conformed all the properties appropriately, and that's been confirmed, just so you're aware.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners?
Mayor, may I comment?
Sure, Commissioner.
Just, just for the record, to be clear, the property on the corner of Bloomfield Center was an application that was before the Zoning Board of Adjustment in two thousand and fifteen. The applicant for, for that property was not Mr. Mecca. After the property was approved in its current form by the Zoning Board of Adjustment, the owner of the property was unable to build it, and he sold it to Mr. Mecca. Not before the Zoning Board buying another property, bought it from the owner, could not afford to complete the project. Just to be clear, it wasn't that. The other thing is that we all can have points of view on what happens. Builder in this case, well, there might be, because he owns more property, and the fact that we found thirteen violations out of over four hundred and sixty units, we did actually settle with him with a very significant fine. Under the UCC, the Uniform Construction Code, the nature of the violations that occurred in his apartments adding a second bedroom, by the code and by the law, actually carry a fine of two thousand dollars per incident. So where he could have been fined twenty-six thousand dollars for those violations, he actually was fined one million.
But that didn't address the issue where we have overcrowding from all those classes rooms down in Washington is an example, that's in his area, that all affected.
Actually, we'll disagree with you. Right, the overcrowding at Washington School is not directly attributed to those new units. In one building, one fifty-seven, which has over two hundred units in it, has no children in the school system, and the other, other property has twenty-seven children. And remember, overcrowding in our schools is not about apartments. It's about the fact that we are in the twenty-first century, and we are using infrastructure that was built in early to mid twentieth century for a different purpose. In the twentieth century, when it was built, we did not have all of the special needs requirements that require small classroom size, where we only have large classrooms. We only had half-day kindergarten. Today, we have full-day kindergarten. We also have advancements in curricular structure that requires more contact time for teachers, which is necessitating smaller classroom size. The issues of infrastructure are not related to apartments. They're related to the fact that we are using the space differently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Mr. Del Pito. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? You're on mute, Mr. Jena Tempo.
Rossi?
Yes, hi, Tammy Rossi, twenty-eight Colonial Terrace. First and foremost, Commissioner Rogers, I wish you well on your endeavors. My first question is for, well, I guess I would address you, Mayor Scarpelli, sorry. But it is regarding our town attorney's response to the Chickalini Building. And this study being done there, he said on the building and surrounding properties. My question is, which surrounding properties is he pertaining to? As I realized, the parking lot was, and that was a big reason why we purchased that in the first place, was to have a municipal parking lot for the downtown businesses. What, what surrounding properties was he pertaining to?
I'll answer that, Mr. Jena Tempo, if you need to clarify. When the Board of Commissioners sent this to the Planning Board to study the area, we asked that study from High Street all the way to Vreeland Avenue to see if any of those properties, or which properties, qualify as an area of redevelopment.
Okay. Oh, okay, all right. And my next question is regarding our taxes. So I jumped on this call late, and the last I heard was that there would be a zero tax increase on the municipal side, correct?
Commissioner Evans.
Yes, Tammy, the municipal tax levy, or the amount to be raised from taxpayers, has no increase, zero.
Now, at the same time, are town employee salaries, are they getting their increases?
In this budget, the budget does contemplate an increase in salaries, which I identified in my slide presentation, that there are some salary increases. But other than in public safety, they're nominal.
And they're quite, but how, how does that happen if our, how is that being funded if there is no tax increase on the municipal side?
Sure. We were able to, when we do the budget every year, we have to look at not, not just what we need to spend in that one year, we look at it over, over what are the potential future risks that can, that can impact us, and how do we prepare for that? It's, it's a normal financial planning aspect of you put together any set of financial statements, budget, or projections. In this particular case, we had anticipated the need to prepare for tax appeals that were, it actually brought against the town by, initially by then taken over by On Three. And that was covering three years. So what we were able to do is, in the negotiations with our, with On Three, we were able to actually eliminate that risk. They had, they withdrew their tax appeals. And as a result, from, from planning for that over several years, we were able to release that reserve to offset, in effect, bring that revenue in at a time that we needed it to zero out the increase.
And what is the tax increase on the Board of Education side?
They, they're actually having their meeting tonight, tentatively. I understand that they were looking at a two-point-seven percent increase. And as I shared previously, the county isn't settled yet, but I expect the county increase to be, to be zero or slightly down.
Two-point-sevens, so it went from two-point-two to one-point-one to two-point-seven. That's a, that's a big difference in the three, that's a big difference in the three figures that were provided. Okay. And my last.
I understand, as a board, right, we can, can consult with the school board, but statutorily, it is a completely different and independent body from the municipality. This Board of Commissioners cannot statutorily interfere or influence what the school board, actually driven by the superintendent, as to what is necessary for educating the children. They do that on their own. That's why frequently I will remind people that when you look at your tax increase, it's divided into three areas. Roughly seventeen percent is, is money that we have to pay to the county. About forty-nine percent is what goes to the school when we collect that, because we're the collecting agency, we're not, we don't control that entire budget. And it's in my department that while I have to send out the bill, I only control what Commissioners do, and specifically what. So while I have that macro responsibility, any decisions in effect that the school board needs to make in terms of educating their children, what they need to do for teachers and so on, is under direct control.
Okay. And again, pardon me for joining the Zoom meeting late in the game, but did I hear that you introduced the budget and voted on it today?
Yes, we voted only on the introduction of the budget. We have a public hearing that is scheduled for June fourth by the next board. That will review this budget in a public forum.
Excellent, thank you so very much. Thank you.
Anybody else, Mr. Jena Tempo?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Quirk, can you hear us now?
How are you?
Mr. Quirk?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, we can hear you better now.
Okay, yeah, I had better reception the first time, and I rebooted and I got back. I'm here just to thank all the Commissioners and Mayor for putting out those great appreciation signs. They look terrific around the town. A lot of people have come up to me and said that's a great, a great thing for Nutley. I do have a question for Mr. Jena Tempo and/or Ms. Evans. Mr. Jena Tempo, as you know, I've been in contact with the construction official with violations due, based on election signs. Do you know what the status of that is?
Status of what, Mr. Quirk? You and I had a conversation. You and I had a conversation, a long conversation.
No, I know, but.
Let me just state what I know, and you, we both had conversations and some emails back and forth. I've been working with code enforcement. We've spoken to all the campaigns, most, and the campaigns have done a good job of trying to bring the signs back into compliance. One of the problems that we have is that our elections are every four years. So, you know, sometimes we're not, we only deal with it every four years when it comes to these, these elections. So, and I've, I've been driving around myself, Dave Berry has been, and we were satisfied that everyone's tried to comply with the ordinance. So there's only a week left for the election. We understand, you know, look, signs are also a constitutional issue, and they're not ripped down or taken down like. We try to keep them out of the right of ways because they don't belong in the public right of way. But, you know, people have a constitutional right to have signs on their lawn. I understand what your issue is. We've had a good conversation about it.
And what is that, and what is that issue? What is my issue?
What the ordinance allows, Mr. Quirk, I understand what you're saying, I read.
My issue is not with lawn signs.
I understand what your issue is with the bigger signs on limiting them to other places, and that's what we have endeavored to do, so.
I haven't seen it.
Well, I have, and I've been driving around and trying to check, and I'm satisfied. But I don't, you know, I don't make the complaints, I don't file the complaints, so.
Yeah, but we have code enforcement, that's why I'm bringing this conversation to Mr. Evans. He's head of code enforcement. I'm an architect, I have to comply with all the codes, and that should be the same for everybody.
Mr. Quirk, I appreciate your, your question. My guidance to the code office has been to follow our ordinances and our zoning, and that when someone is in violation, that, that they need to act.
Who needs to act?
The code, the construction official.
Okay.
Has to act, and he has been, and he has followed up repeatedly to have the, the signs addressed. And it's, and wherever there's been an instance, he's been in contact with any of the candidates that are in violation. He's doing his job.
Well, I spoke, I texted him on Saturday, and I saw a new sign up, new large sign that was not there for, this is the first time it's been there. And that had to be put up either Thursday and Friday, and you may think this is trivial, but it's not. And that sign was moved from a different location that Mr. Berry had asked to have removed. So that sign was removed from the corner of Park and Union. And now it sits across from Chestnut Cafe. So can you explain that, can Mr. Berry explain that? Can he do something about that?
I, I cannot speak. Like, I cannot speak to it because I haven't spoken to Mr. Mr. Berry, but I will speak to him first thing in the morning.
But at the same time, I want to thank the other commissioners and they know who they are. Mr. Tucci's signs are all 15 square feet. They comply. So does Mr. Scarpelli. And so is Mr. Mr. Evans. Okay, I think code enforcement is code enforcement. And it should comply with code enforcement in every detail. That's all I have to say. And thanks for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Quirk. Anybody else, Mr. John Tempo?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ma'am? Hold on. Hello? Is someone named Sylvia? Sylvia? Are you there?
Do you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, yes. So I came to the meeting late, maybe it was addressed already. I just wanted to check on the status of the taxes, the property taxes. Are they postponed to June 1st as it was planned?
Commissioner Evans, you moved the resolution tonight, so.
Yes, the, we have adopted, we have elected to adopt the governor's executive order and property payment are now due on June 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Could you give your address for the record, please?
188 Mountain View Avenue.
And your name?
Sylvia Stachovitch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There may be one more, hold on. Mr. Rubin?
No, I didn't raise my hand. I'm sorry.
Okay, and it just was showing up as the other one. Let me just, Mr. Mayor, one more time.
Anybody else wish to address the board of commissioners? Raise your hand.
There may be one more. Sir or ma'am? Is someone on? Is someone on? Hello? I don't know, they're not responding.
NCC, but it looks like they're might be on their end. There we go.
Hello?
Someone with the screen name NCC?
Yeah, NCC, but they're not, they're not responding.
Nobody else? Before we close the meeting, I'd like to turn over to Commissioner Rogers for closing remarks and thank you again for your service, Commissioner. Unmute yourself, Commissioner.
Oh, we should mute, we should unmute the commissioner. Wait, Commissioner, start again, start again. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to address you, my colleagues and the citizens of Nutley. You know, I've always believed that God had a special place in his heart for this township. And we've seen some extraordinary people come our way. So I want to talk about six extraordinary people tonight as I leave this board of commissioners. One of those extraordinary persons are Alani, our camp clerk. He came into this job, really, really came into a job that was probably one of the most difficult, daunting jobs that anyone could ever, ever perform. But through the crisis, through the change in the way we do elections and on and on and on, Alani, you did one heck of a job and I thank you for the work that you've done for this township. The town councillor, Mr. John Tempo, I've, I don't have enough good words to say about him. In fact, I shared with him a few times that if I could get somebody's ear in DC, we're going to put this guy in the Supreme Court because he certainly has performed very well for this township. And so to you, I give thanks.
Thank you.
Come to Commissioner Petrako, him and I became very, very close over the past few years. And something that many people don't know, but Al and I used to kind of take a ride up to the Holy Face Monastery in Clifton quite often. And we would pray for our township and we would pray for our colleagues and the extraordinary people that live here. And it goes to Al's character and what he has done really significantly for this town. I go over to the mayor. Mayor, I've really got to know you as, I call you Gentleman Joe. You're always Gentleman Joe. And you got that from your dad, Mayor, and he probably got that from his dad. Extraordinary family that built their roots here in this town and continue to serve through you. And I thank you. Commissioner Tucci, there's not enough I could say with regard to the parks, the recreation department. I've got to tell you, it was so exciting to see when you began these programs, the Princess Program, the Prince Program. I mean, we could go on and on and on over how you built a recreational program that is impacting, impacting children at an early age and that they will carry that on for the rest of their lives. And then we go on to Commissioner Evans. Well, I've said this and I believe a lot of people, probably a good number of people in this township realize that we've been blessed by God to have your expertise and your talent and the gifts God's given you to make sure that we kept our budgets in line and to make sure that whenever we ran into a crisis, it would not become financially catastrophic for us. And boy, did you ever achieve that goal at this point in time. Things we never expected. But the key here is teamwork. We did a lot. We did a lot for this township and the people in this town did a lot for us. The spirit of volunteerism has never died and that's why I say God had a special place in his heart for us because he still touches the hearts and souls and spirits of people in this community. So I will close by simply saying, quoting, and by the way, nine o'clock tonight, I will be addressing the people of Nutley on Facebook and YouTube and other social media platforms, but I will close out, I will close out by repeating and quoting what Ronald Reagan said when he left office. Gentlemen, ladies, not bad, not bad at all. Thank you and God bless you all.
Godspeed to you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I know we'll be hearing from you in the future. We know that your love of the township, you're going to be around. So you, you'll be serving us in a different capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a pleasure.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And the time is 8:38.
Good night, everybody. Good luck, Commissioner.
Good night. Thank you, Commissioner.